This is Saturday afternoon, one to three. I'm holding another walk. If you want to join.
Welcome to the June the 12th, 2023 meeting with the City of City Commission who will have an invitation offered by Commissioner Pajali, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Praise God. Lord, thank you for another day of life. Please watch over and guide us this evening as we conduct this most important business for the people of Sandusky. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Myers, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Wantington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meinzler?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Commissioner, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of May 8, 2023? Mr. Clay?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wanting?
I move that we accept the minutes of the May 22nd meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. And thank you for that date correction, Mr. Wanting. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, share with us your name, your address, and your agenda comments, agenda items. Go on, rush into the podium. That's good, we'll move on. Tonight, we have two firefighters and a firefighter who is being given a promotion. Two firefighters to induct, and Mr. Orzak, you will do the honors. Please.
First one's Cory Allen. Anybody that's here that wants to stand up and take pictures of the walking man, quick things going on.
I, Cory Allen, recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Cory Allen, recognize my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my professional profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter for the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter for the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability. So help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Mr. Brady, it remains one of the most dangerous parts of the job. We've had a few firefighters attended by EMS on the way out.
You've lost one yet.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. D'Amico, this is great. You should just tell these guys that they got to poke a hole in that thing first when they got a brand new shirt. Like, you just, I think you guys all get a big kick out of doing this.
Through you, Commissioner Brady, the commissioners have a little bio about each one of these guys. Cory Allen is originally from the Lorraine area. Prior to being hired by Sandusky Fire Department, Cory was a paramedic with Life Care Ambulance Service in Lorraine. He has his firefighter one and two certifications, as well as his paramedic certification. Previously, Cory has worked part-time in the fire service for Eliria Township Fire Department and the Sheffield Village Fire Department, where he actually earned an EMS citation for his heroic duties in saving one of his patients. He has a daughter due in July. Cory will be assigned to number one shift under the direction of Captain Jason Resch. We'd like to congratulate him on his new career and welcome him to the City of Sandusky.
Marquis?
I, Marquis Page, Jr., recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Marquis Page, Jr., recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter in the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter in the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability. So help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability. So help me.
It's a cake. Marquis resides in Sandusky with his fiancee Shelby and their two young boys. He is a Sandusky High School graduate. Prior to being hired by Sandusky Fire Department, Marquis worked at Ventra for seven years. He told us in his interview, his motivation for seeking employment with Sandusky Fire Department was to show his young family that he can serve his community. He's scheduled to travel to the State Fire Academy in Reynoldsburg in June for EMT school, and then again in September for his firefighter one and two training. Marquis will be assigned to number two shift under the direction of Captain Matt Lesch. We'd just like to congratulate him on his new career choice and also welcome him to Sandusky Fire Department.
All add to Marquis's story, I'd want to commend Chief D'Amico and the firefighters, especially the captains that have put their faith in Marquis. He doesn't have any training and our ability to provide that training to him and be undugged to get him through the academy and invest in him is something that the administration has promised the firefighters we do if we have candidates, and so this is a testimony. I want to appreciate his leadership on that.
We have Dustin Hammond.
I, Dustin Hammond, recognizing my fundamental duty as a lieutenant of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Dustin Hammond, recognizing my fundamental duty as a lieutenant of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a lieutenant of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a lieutenant of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability. So help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability. So help me.
Another easy one. Through you, President Brady, to the commissioners. Dustin Hammond has been a member of Sandusky Fire Department since March 6, 2008. Dustin resides in Willard with his wife and three children. He was the lead medic on his shift for 12 years maintaining the department's EMS supplies. He's a member of the Sandusky Fire Department's dive team. He has shown great leadership in training newer recruits throughout his career and has served many times as acting lieutenant, honing his skills for this current promotion. He is no stranger to being a leader. Dustin is the president of the Willard City School Board of Education and the Holiday Lakes Homeowners Association. Dustin will be a lieutenant on number two shift under the direction of Captain Matt Lesch. Lieutenant Hammond has been a great asset to Sandusky Fire Department thus far in his career, and there's no doubt that he will continue to be a great asset to the department as in his new leadership role as lieutenant. Congratulations, Lieutenant Hammond.
Well, good day for the city. Anytime I walk in this room and there are safety forces, whether they're the fire department or the police department, and we're inducting new members or promoting people, it's a good day for Sandusky. Thanks to all of you. Now, the speech that I normally give now is, I think you know, you don't have to hang around for this entire meeting. You can hit the door. You're certainly welcome, but you don't have to.
Ready to go?
Commissioners have to stay.
Hey, Mike, he said we can go. He said we can go.
Yeah, well, I'm just happy that.
A lot of what?
Not a surprise.
Lieutenant on the horse, you were there, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioners, you have before you the several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved. Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved and those minutes are approved. Commissioners, we have 12 items on the consent agenda this evening. I think that might be a record. Do any of you wish to move any consent items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the complaint agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, liquor license for sip and spin LLC. Item B, liquor license for Element Entertainment LLC. Item C, admission tax update, second reading. Item D, budget amendment number three. Item E, approval for permanent utility easement to Columbia Gas on Jackson Street parking lot. Item F, service center repair and restoration project, change order one and final with Garland. Item G, purchase and sale agreement of Landbank Parcel on Second Street. Item H, purchase and sale agreement of Landbank Parcel 2201 Campbell Street. Item I, purchase and sale agreement of Landbank Parcel 402 Bell Street. Item J, community housing impact and preservation partnership agreement with Erie County. Item K, approval of Office 365 annual agreement renewal. Item L, approval of calendar year 2024 STS grant application with Ohio Transit Partnership.
Commissioners, having heard this liquor license ordinances and ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
I move to accept the consent agenda and declare that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the sections reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the liquor permits, ordinances, and resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Those liquor permits, ordinances, and a resolution are passed. We'll turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, will you present item number one, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with KS Associates Incorporated of Eliria, Ohio, for the beneficial reuse of dredge material Phase Two of Project Two related to the Sandusky Bay Initiative, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wanting?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, this is round two. As I understand it, can you share with us and for the record exactly what we're doing here?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The first phase of this project was constructed a year or two ago, and we are looking to move forward with the second phase. They did put one round of dredgings into the Phase One portion, and they're looking to put a second phase in later this year and possibly even a third round of dredgings, or maybe even a partial dredging cycle in 2024. The hope is to have this project area one, or wherever we select, have this constructed so that in 24, 25 timeframe, we can have all the permits and all the facility in place so that we can continue to do the dredgings. I will say too that the Corps of Engineers is working on a completely separate project of trying to find beneficial areas to reuse the dredge material after this round of projects. So hopefully, we can buy six, seven years with these two projects, and then they can continue to dredge by whatever mechanism they choose. And there are several options they're looking at. We're working closely with them on an annual basis. The State of Ohio also is working with them to figure out potential future phases. This, my hope is, is the last one. And lastly, the first phase, I did speak with Bowling Green. I spoke with Old Woman Creek and the Ohio Fish and Wildlife as well. And all the monitoring of the existing phases is ongoing. It's continuing, and it's going really well for nutrients, macrovertebrates, birds, all the other wildlife, and chlorophyll, turbidity, all the other things that they were looking at to see if Phase One is actually working the way it was intended to.
Mr. Klein, I find it standing that we are not, not a choice that we make. It's a requirement by the Ohio EPA that prohibits open lake dumping, and therefore, someone has to come up with an alternative place to dump dredge materials. So this is not something that we're choosing to make new environmental areas for, but it's kind of a two-edged sword. We're providing a dumping area and getting some, hopefully some land to be reused.
Yes, and that's exactly the scenario that the city and other communities along the lakefront are put into, is that the Ohio EPA, the State of Ohio, in 2020 banned open lake disposal of dredge material. The federal government did not agree with that, so they have been, the Corps of Engineers have been a little bit resistant to buying into that. Well, last year, they changed their laws and changed their philosophies, and now the federal government is also buying into that, and that's why they're moving forward on their own without having to engage with those local communities to find a local stakeholder that would actually move forward with these types of projects. And I guess one thing that should be very clear is that the city does not, to date, does not have any funds in Phase One and will not have any funds during the design of Phase Two. We will still work with the LRI, the US government, the state government, to find funding to put forth for actual construction of Phase Two, wherever that location is decided.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, as I have in the past, I will be abstaining on this, do the visibility of the project from my home.
Additional comments, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
That ordinance is passed. Myers, will you present item number two?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Great Lakes Demolition of Clyde, Ohio, for the East Water Street resurfacing project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
Move the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
That ordinance is passed on first reading and will come back for us for a second reading with four votes. Is that correct, Mr. Allen?
I think we got five.
We had two extensions.
One, two.
Oh, we have five.
We got five, yeah.
And that passes. That passes, sir. My mistake. My math is a little rusty after 70 years of being out of grade school.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
If I may, just a comment directed toward the representatives of the institution here. I believe, or suspect, that this is being located here in part because of the proximity to the transit hub. And so I would ask for your partnership in advocating for much broader funding than the City of Sandusky is able to provide for Sandusky Transit. We do need that, or this, or transit will come. Unfortunately, those controls now range in the vicinity of half a million dollars. And I will say that this is just to purchase the equipment. It takes a year to get the equipment in at this point. So, sometime late this year, maybe early next year, we're going to come back with the actual construction phase of it to install this piece of equipment, to hire the electricians. Maybe there might be some concrete for a pad or something, or some mounting brackets, things like that. And then also the controls to make sure that it's communicating with the equipment. In the meantime, we are able to operate on hand, which means that we can do it all manually. So, we're not having trouble with the generator. We just, every time there's a power failure or anything like that, we actually have to physically go out and turn it back on and make sure that everything's operating. And sometimes we'll have to call in the electricians or even the IT staff to make sure that we're able to supply water to the community.
Lot cheaper than buying a generator.
It is, yes. Much cheaper. The generator was going to be at least another half a million dollars.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you call a role on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $300,000 through the Economic Development Fund Program to Family Health Services LLC in relation to the property located at 149 East Water Street and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your opinion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Gilson, will you share with us what we're doing with this economic development?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I do want to point out that Marlena Binkley, the controller, as well as Cora Higgins, public relations manager, are here tonight from Family Health Services on behalf of David Tatro, who has unfortunately lost his brother and is away at services. Family Health Services is a federally qualified health center with facilities in Sandusky and Norwalk. They provide comprehensive primary care and other dental and healthcare services to the surrounding area. Family Health Services purchased the grain rebuilding at 149 East Water Street in late 2022. The Gallagher Medical Practice previously occupied the first floor with the upper two floors vacant. Family Health Services is redeveloping the property to provide primary health care, behavioral health, and discount pharmacy services. The renovations include interior demolition, installation of a new elevator, new windows, and storefront, and interior buildout at a total cost of over $3 million. They have secured financing from Civista Bank. The facility will result in 18 positions on site, nine of which are projected as new with an estimated annual payroll of $1.7 million in the city of Sandusky. A grant in the amount of $300,000 was recommended for approval by the Economic Development Incentive Committee at its May meeting. The city would be responsible for providing $200,000 in grant proceeds from the Economic Development Capital Projects Fund and $100,000 from the Destination Development Projects Capital Projects Fund. This project is catalytic. It will stimulate additional capital investment to rehabilitate vacant and underutilized properties in the area. It fortifies and strengthens an existing historic structure that has been underutilized for some time. It will spur job creation and tax revenue increase. It's consistent with multiple City of Sandusky planning documents and will create ready-to-, ready-to-occupy space. Financial assistance from this program will help in completing the project.
Comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I will be abstaining from this as I actually have multiple conflicts, so I won't be voting.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I know that we have a good history with this applicant. We participated in their dental, their dental business at the South Campus, and I think that has been very successful. I'm optimistic that this will be equally successful. I understand that it is a lot of dollars, but I believe that these dollars are going to go to benefit a segment of our community who are perhaps dramatically underserved and will be served in a much more appropriate way in this location. So, I'm pleased that it applied, and I'm pleased that we have the ability to help fund this. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a role on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Abstain.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Abstain.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
That ordinance is passed on first reading and will come back for a second reading with four votes. Is that correct, Mr. Heil?
I think we got five.
We had two extensions.
One, two.
Oh, we have five.
We got five, yeah.
And that passes. That passes, sir. My mistake. My math is a little rusty after 70 years of being out of grade school.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
If I may, just a comment directed toward the representatives of the institution here. I believe, or I suspect, that this is being located here in part because of the proximity to the transit hub. And so, I would ask for your partnership in advocating for much broader funding than the city of Sandusky is able to provide for Sandusky Transit. We do need that, or this, or transit will come to an end. This is integral to your plans. It is integral to the services that the city of Sandusky wishes to provide. But if we don't get additional partnership, larger partnerships than we've received so far, and particularly partnerships and funding from the county, transit will come to a close. I hate to be alarmist about it, but I have to be realistic about it. And so, I would very much appreciate your support because I know this is a great service that will be provided. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested a resolution be passed declaring that the amount of taxes that may be raised by levies on the current tax duplicate within the 10 mil limitation will be insufficient to provide for the necessary requirements of the city of Sandusky and that it is necessary to levy an additional tax in excess of such limitation for parks and recreational purposes and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. White?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
Just to put this in some context, my understanding is what we are doing today is we are asking the county to respond to us and say, this is how much money would be raised by this particular levy. And I want to put this in some larger context. We have long all heard calls for a rec center, and I think it's, it's an amenity that we really want to provide. But we've also all observed communities that built rec centers only to find that they were not able to sustain them, the operating expense during, during more challenging times, and they were often shuttered and fell to neglect, and then were not able to be reopened. So, I, we've talked about it at this table. I think that most of the folks at this table are convinced that we should not have, we should not build a rec center unless we have sustainable, reliable operating income for that. This will just tell us how much the library's levy that's rolling off, and that will roll off at the end of this year, and we would pick up from that point. This will simply tell us how much funds would be available from that levy and allow us to go forward. Just this afternoon, staff distributed to all of us a draft of a report from the consultants who are helping us work through what a, what options are available in terms of site, of sites and sizes of a rec center, what kind of amenities we could provide, rough ideas of what operating costs would be. So, I'm optimistic that this is a, this is a first step, and I think at future meetings, we're going to have to talk about the size of the rec center, funding for the rec center, where it's going to be, what it's going to look like, what the amenities are going to be. That's all an important discussion to have at another meeting. I just want to put this in some context for the public. We're not building a rec center tonight. We're not voting to build a rec center. This is a question that says, how much are we going to receive in operating funds through this levy? So, I support this step, and I support a cautious approach as we move forward, move toward asking the public to provide operating expenses to support the rec center at the fall election. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. White?
I agree with Mr. Murray that all of us do not have a clear picture of what the desired outcome of this building or structure will be. And it's just set up to, for operating expenses to get it on the ballot, and it'll become clear in the future exactly what will be provided, what the goals or outcomes or objectives will be of the, of the structure, and who's going to operate it and those types of things. Those will all come clear before, in the millage, before the election. Correct?
Mr. Myers, additional comments? I don't think this is unique. We find ourselves in a position where most of us believe that a rec center is, is a desired benefit in this community, and now the residents are going to have the final say. The market's really going to determine whether we have a rec center or not. If we do not, as Mr. Murray has indicated on more than one occasion, if we cannot find a reliable and sustainable source to fund the operating of, operation of that rec center, we're not going to build a rec center. So, that, the vote will end up in the residents' hands, and if they truly want a rec center, that vote will be yes. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. That concludes our regular general. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Evening, Commissioners, Audiences, and staff. I have a donation first for the Sandusky Rec. Would like to thank Brown, Crow, and Construction for their donation of 18 broken tea box collectors for Mills Golf Course. The value of material labor is $2,000. If I get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I assume those aren't broken tea boxes that they collect, that they, they're not broken. I assume that these are tea boxes for broken teas.
Correct.
Right?
I think that's correct. Would that be correct, Mr. Waddington?
Yeah, I've broken enough of them, yeah.
I get the feeling you reuse them. That's what I get the feeling. That objection, the motion will be approved. You're going to object? That motion's approved. Our thanks to Brown and Crow.
Second, Sandusky Rec received an anonymous $500 donation for the city for Sandusky's Juneteenth celebration, if I get a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. That objection, the motion will be approved. You're going to object? That motion's approved. Our thanks for the $500.
And then I have a, the next, next thing is something that Troy Vaccaro had contacted me for, on late Thursday afternoon. We've been attempting to purchase a chassis for his Fleet Mechanics vehicle. It's 1991. It's 32 years old. We've been in the process of doing that for over a year. And we also just concluded an RFP process June 5th, and we had no bidders on that. He found out Thursday that the, there's an opening to order the chassis, although it's limited. The double chassis, or the double cab chassis closed in two days. We're not anticipating this being open until the next commission meeting. So, I'm requesting that the commission approve an emergency purchase and authorize $44,634.07 so the staff can get a purchase order, which is required for the placement of the order. The cost will come from capital funds in formal legislation we brought to the next city commission meeting. So moved.
Motion for that, gentlemen?
So moved.
But a motion, there's been a second?
Second.
But a second? Not objection? That motion will be approved if Ms. Myers will call a role on that. That's a lot of money to spend on a, on a voice vote, so let's have a, let's have a voice vote.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That motion is passed.
And then for Sandusky Fire, on June 7th, Lieutenant Robert Bott retired from the Sandusky Fire Department after 23 years of service. Lieutenant Bott was an integral part of Sandusky Fire Department's water rescue and dive team for the most of his career. He led the dive team for many years, helping develop it into one of the most active dive rescue teams on the southern shores of Lake Erie. Lieutenant Bott was a well-respected member of Sandusky Fire Department. We would like to congratulate him and wish him good luck in his retirement. And then we promoted the next lieutenant today. The finance, the city of Sandusky was notified as been awarded with the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Governmental Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its 2021 annual comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. Thank you, Director Reader, for your fine leadership and your staff. If you go into her office, she has all the awards displayed.
Obviously, her best is better than mine.
Public works, special thanks to local Boy Scouts troop number eight for volunteering to place flags at veterans' grave sites at Oakland Cemetery prior to the Memorial Day ceremony. As construction continues along Perkins Ave, there will continue to be intermittent, intermittent lane closures. We ask the public to be patient when traveling the area and plan their route accordingly. Community development, the Great Lakes Community Action Partnership has a weatherization program available to income-eligible applicants. The program can help with improvements to make your home safer, healthier, and more affordable to live in. Work may include attic wall and basement installation, insulation, heating system repairs or replacements, air leakage reduction, and other measures where appropriate. More about the program can be found at www.glcap.org/weatherization, or by calling 1-800-775-9767. In recreation, Sandusky Rec would like to thank three volunteers who have been an integral part of the spring out-of-school programming with Sandusky Rec. Mary Truca and Kathy Warner have volunteered their time after school to provide homework help to several young participants in our out-of-school program, and Sierra Sangstock volunteers her time to help with the front desk and check-in duties for the program. Several summer break camps and programs are available for registration. Gymnastics for the months of June, July, and August are also open for signups. Register by visiting cityofsandusky.com/recreation and follow Sandusky Rec at facebook.com/sanduskyrec. And lastly, Sandusky Rec would like to thank Bay Shore Counseling and Susan Lowell for their respective sponsorships of yoga on the pier and Tai Chi in the park for this summer. Yoga on the pier is Saturday mornings on the Jackson Street Pier at 7:00 a.m. and runs through the summer. Tai Chi in the parks is Wednesday mornings at 8:00 a.m. in Shoreline Park and runs through the 5th of July. Both of these programs are free and open to the public, thanks to Bay Shore Counseling, owner Henrietta Whalen, and Susan Lowell's mental health counseling and consultant services. That concludes my report for this evening. Take any questions if you have them.
Comments or questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Murray?
Really, two, two comments, not really questions. I want to congratulate the finance department, department and Ms. Reader for the award, but I want to point, put it in some larger context because we've been winning these awards for many, many years. You can disagree with what the city of Sandusky does in terms of how we spend our funds, but you'll always know how we do spend our funds. We've, we've had one of the most transparent local governments around for a very long time. We were the first local government to put its agendas and supporting materials online for the public to view. We continue to put more minutes online than any other local government, agendas for all of those committees that meet, videos for many, if not all, of those meetings. It takes a lot of staff time, a lot of effort, and a lot of expense to, to pay for that transparency, but it's really, really important. We continue that tradition, and I'd just like to make sure the public knows that what Sandusky does is unusual in terms of the, of the transparency that we provide. I'm proud of it. I'm glad we do it. I wouldn't do it any other way. The other thing I'd like to note, as we move forward now, many months after Mr. Whoops had departed for Cleveland, and we're delighted that he's going to be coming back into the area in another role, but I simply want to publicly acknowledge the outstanding job that Mr. Orzak and Ms. Gilson have done as the interim manager and assistant interim manager. Both of you have really stepped up to the plate. You've been outstanding leaders for this organization, and I very much appreciate it, and I know my colleagues do because they've all told me exactly that. So, thank you.
You're here. Additional comments or questions for the city manager?
And I, I would just like to take a moment, basically to piggyback off of Commissioner Murray's comments. I won't name names, but I did indeed receive a call, I think, the Thursday before last just to, the gentleman just shared with me just how great of a job he, he thought you both have been doing. So, just thought I'd share that with you.
Items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. White?
The chairman of the vacation rentals or transient housing is Mr. Bajali, and I'm the vice chair. There's two of us.
I don't recall taking a vote on that. Maybe we can do that later on.
Yeah. But I will speak for him. We, we have met, and we are collecting data from the city right now, and we've, we've spoken with Shores and Islands, Larry from Shores and Islands, and we've gotten their input, and we intend to, and we, we're collecting comparable data from other communities that, how they operate and how they license things. And I think that our next step will probably be meeting with Ms. Gibson, Ms. Gilson, and Aaron, and some of the city staff, some of the housing inspectors, try to get their take, and of course, all of us will try to, and we're going to try to condense this all into something that we can examine within, hopefully before 18 months, but we got to go to planning. So, I just want to let you know that we started it trying to do a little brainstorming, and it's all over the place right now, so we're just trying to funnel it down into something that we could all discuss. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. It's definitely a film.
Mr. Meinter and I did meet last Friday, and had a very constructive meeting. We kind of outlined where we, where we both stand on transient housing. So, the, the good news is we got started, and we hope to do some big things in the future as far as transient housing goes within that 18-month timeframe or shorter.
Okay. Thank you to both of you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I may just note something that may have caught your eyes, certainly caught mine. I may just note something that may have caught your eyes, certainly caught mine. The present version of the budget, as passed by the Senate Committee, strips the ability of local communities to charge, to impose charges for both rental registration and transient rental registration. It's a real problem, so... And we really can't continue to afford the programs that we have today without those fees, without that funding, and that's only fair because it's that activity that's generating those costs for the city, and it's right that we should impose those costs on the ones generating that cost and that activity. So I would urge any of you with good ties with our Republican state legislators to put in a word in opposition to this. I'm probably not the right person.
All right. Mr. Chairman, just clarification, this is something that's in the House?
It's in the budget now, which has not been passed.
It's not off the floor yet, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poehl.
Commissioner Murray, just to be clear, what this says is what? That we don't, we no longer be allowed to charge rental fees, which pay for code enforcement and the inspections that we do?
The budget summary that I've... If I may respond to Mr. Poehl. The budget summary that I reviewed, that Ms. Meyer shared with us, we've got to go way into it to find it, but it indicated that it would prohibit the use of state monies or the collection of local fees to support a rental registration program.
Okay. Essentially, it's the same thing. And the reason I wanted the public to understand what this means, the inspections that we do on houses and the money that we spend to pay for those inspections, to keep our properties up, is about to be washed away by the... At the state level. What you said sounded like kind disorder, but you need to have some background knowledge to understand the legal terminology you talk in.
Thank you.
That's what's important, is that the state's about to crash these programs that we use to keep up our properties.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
Just a question for Mr. Heil. Do we do the rental registration under a business section of the code?
Through you, Commissioner Brady, the rental registration, off the top of my head, I believe, is actually in the business section of the code. I believe the preemption language that Commissioner Murray is discussing would impact both our regular rental registrations for long-term rentals and our short-term rental registration, both which are non-planning business regulations. Does that answer all of your questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it's just a matter of if this did pass or if it was approved, if we could somehow change the language so that these were considered businesses, not rental properties, because ultimately, it is a business, right?
Correct. I would be skeptical. The language, as it currently stands, through all the summaries that I've seen, as well as Commissioner Murray is mentioning, is quite broad. This is just in the Senate version of the budget. The Senate has passed its version, the House has passed its version of the state budget. They now have to reconcile those and come up with the final version. We don't know if it'll survive, to Commissioner Murray's point, if it's something that gives commissioners pause, reaching out to elected representatives in the Senate and the State House would be very helpful. But as... My current understanding of this is it would probably invalidate that and could potentially impact any ways of creatively avoiding the prohibition, because it is pretty clearly designed to eliminate rental registration fees.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I will add that it's flagrantly unconstitutional, but as this General Assembly has demonstrated time and again, they don't care about what the Constitution says. And so, we, perhaps in other cities, may band together to litigate that because it's a violation of home rule. I can't imagine a more flagrant violation of home rule than this particular one, and I've looked at that area in the past, but it's been whittled away by the Supreme Court. It may or may not survive a challenge, so I think that that's probably next, but we'll certainly, hopefully, be standing behind some of our richer fellow cities to litigate that issue. But I... If it happens, I would hope that we would support that litigation as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poehl.
May I suggest to the public that, as we've asked you to write your representative, you might... Whether you're in favor of what's been proposed or not, you might ask how they expect us to support these programs and keep our communities functioning. Just simply, if they're taking the money away, why they're doing it is their own, but you might ask, what are we going to do after you pass, if you pass this? That's really what's important, deciding who you're going to vote for, not whether you... It's like, after we do this, now what?
Items of new business. Any items of new business questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Although we've been on a roll, I regret to request that we set a motion, or regret to make a motion to set an executive session on the purchase of real estate.
Second. Set a motion and a second discussion.
Is that next week?
When you're gone. As far as we're involved, Commissioner, and that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
That executive session is set. Are there any additional items of new business? If not, are there any public comments on any item that pertains to city business? Are the same group of people rushing to the podium in the dinner? We will recess to executive session.
One in that, John.
Yes, John. I... Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fred.
Let us know when we're back.
Dennis, am I gonna get a beer?
Uh, we're too quick.
Someone's... We're not at light?
No, not.
You did your... Your mic's on, just let you know.
Oh, Jesus Christ. Pepsi, right?
I'm glad I cliveted.
He didn't rush right in, anyway. That's all but.
Is it time?
Well, we got a couple other guys around.
Oh.
Down there.
Okay.
Where's Mike and Steve? They cuddling?
They're... they're fumbling at the door.
They're trying to get their key out.
They're in the room still.
This is the first time they've had a key, okay.
Here they come.
Yeah.
Better know it.
Yeah, we installed that lock while you guys were sleeping.
How the company left?
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.